...Council meeting, March 20, 2012. This meeting has been properly advertised and posted pursuant to NJSA 10:4-6, the Eastern Public Comedians Act. Let's start out with a roll call.
Mayor Nicholson?
Here.
Councilwoman Andrews is absent. Councilman Adalina?
Here.
Councilwoman Claus?
Here.
Councilman Weaver?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Here.
We now have a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the privilege of the floor for a total time not exceed ten minutes, provided you're appearing on the agenda only.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I see it under Resolutions A. Apparently Carol Andrews has resigned, and under B, you're going to nominate someone to fill the vacancy, and then under C, swearing that nominee in. Correct me if I'm wrong, but at one time, there were a total of three nominees needed for a vacancy to be filled, and then a thirty-day period for the consideration of those three. If that's incorrect, just tell me, but it seemed to me that that was the case. So, let me know.
The procedure under the municipal vacancy law is that within fifteen days of the seat becoming vacant, the municipal committee must submit three names to the council for consideration. The council then has fifteen days from the date it receives the letter to act, to select one of the three names submitted, and vote them into the new seat.
So then the swearing-in cannot take place tonight, then it has to be fif-
The council wants to... Well, council, it has to be done within fifteen days, and I don't think there's another meeting before fifteen days, so it has to be done tonight, doesn't it? They have to act within fifteen days of the letter's dated today.
Maybe longer than fifteen, yes, and maybe the next year they'll be doing it within fifteen days.
The council, if the letter's submitted, council can certainly act on it tonight.
So there's no consideration then for time to consider those that are nominated?
Well, the time constraints in the statute are the committee has to submit the letter within fifteen days, and then council must act within fifteen days of the date it receives the letter.
Okay, when was, do you know when the letter was received?
Today.
Today.
Today. The letter was received today. So within fifteen days... You've got fifteen days from the time the letter is received for the consideration, then fifteen days after that, so that's three days.
No, they have fifteen days from today to act on the letter.
It's kind of confusing, but I'll go ahead and accept that.
Anyone else from the floor? Yes?
Brent Frank's 46th Avenue. I want to know what's going to be done at Beth Snyder's old house on Ohio Avenue that burned down in August. And the fencing has been removed, that was around it, and it's not only ugly and ghetto-ish, but I think it's a danger too if somebody gets in and gets hurt. And I want to know why no action's been taken, because I believe it was bang on that was in foreclosure.
It's not really something that's here, but I mean, if you want to address it now, you can, or you can wait until the end of the year.
Brenda, you can go ahead now, if it's all right with this governing body. It's not only the agenda, but it's my understanding concern.
It's fine. Oh, I didn't know that. I thought this was the other meeting. No, I'm just concerned about, and I just need to know why, you know, how they can have it there for eight months, take a fence away, and just have it wide open, anybody can get in there and get hurt, and whatever.
Does anyone have an answer for that?
No.
I do not have an answer for that.
I think Al Holzwerth was talking about that at our latest Quality of Life meeting, if that's the same property, I could be mistaken, Brenda, I'm not sure. I think Al Holzwerth.
It was, it had a fire, it's next to Silver Lake Inn or whatever it was.
I can double-check with him, Brenda, if that's the same property, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Dan Watson, I think, has a little bit of information on that.
I called the mortgage company about that, and they're getting bids for removal of the debris. That was the latest on that, and that was as of last week. Just a second.
So they'll continue looking at that, Brenda, and hopefully have better answers for you. Okay, any other people who think want to speak? Oh.
On R-1268, when you do that resolution, are you planning on reading out the nominees which the mayor's putting forth and that the council is being asked to vote on?
We could, if that's necessary, we would want to group them, but I don't think that's a problem.
I mean, it's like, when you vote, could you mention the names that you're appointed to the various positions?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Yes. In the matter of Trout Avenue and Silver Lake Drive, at the dam of Silver Lake, another car has gone down through there, even though the borough has put a turn sign up. Last week, last year, the county took down the fence that was up, saying that they were going to put metal guardrails up. That has not happened. So, there is a problem there.
We'll have to talk to Al Sexton, he's in contact with the county, and we'll find out why there wasn't guardrails, man, you said there was supposed to be guardrails?
That's what they had said when they took down the fence, that they were going to do.
I believe it was last year, they were refurbishing some of the guardrails in town on the county roads.
Right, and that's when they took the fence down.
And we'll certainly inquire about that.
Yeah.
They repaired that fence, was that fence repaired?
It was removed.
Oh, it was removed.
It was removed, and they took, kept the section of it up, or they put on their cleanup after your dog sign. But the problem with the road is, on the GPSs, on a lot of the cars, it has Trout Avenue going straight through. If you're driving through at night, and you do not know the area, you will go down.
I'll find out what the status is. This is, we did, our public works immediately after last, and we did protect the county.
Yeah, they put the sign up.
And they promised to come right out, so I'll find out what the status is.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, just a suggestion to the governing body on that issue, let's just go to the, the governing body may want to consider doing a change order to the Silver Lake repaving project, and possibly, because it does end right there at that intersection, the borough could elect as a change order to put guardrail there as part of the project. The county parks may not consider, they may just want to put split rail fencing back, as previously was there, whereas if you were to put some type of steel guardrail as a change order as part of the road project, it might expedite the whole thing at not a lot of cost to the borough, and adding a lot of safety to a borough roadway.
I'd like for consideration, Mark, will you present that to, I guess, Mel?
Andy, here.
Makes sense.
Correct.
I'm going to close the question on the page of the floor, and go into some resolutions. Resolution R-12-72, removing member of council by resignation Carol Andrews pursuant to njsa 40A: Colon sixty dash three.
What resolution? This is a resolution accepting the resignation of Carol Andrews. It's not on my ticket here. Okay.
Serious number this afternoon before the, we are seeing the nominations, the nominee's letter.
Does everyone else have the most current agenda? I know that's important, things change today, so I don't know if everyone has to know. Is anyone out there?
I don't hear either, but.
Seventy-two?
Number six.
They're not going in order.
The others were already numbered, and that was added on last minute.
Oh, okay.
All right. Roll call.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept the Carol Andrews resignation.
Second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
Roll call.
Councilman Adalina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Claus?
Yes.
Councilman Weaver?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yep.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Motion to nominate individual to fill-
Well, before you can do that, the court's going to have to read the letter from the unit.
Read the entire letter?
Yes.
Raise for that motion, and the court's going to read the entire letter.
I could email it out.
Good.
Dear Mrs. Johnson, it has come to the attention of the Clementon Democrat Committee that there is currently a vacancy on the Clementon Borough Council created by the resignation of Councilwoman Carol Andrews. As pursuant to New Jersey law, the Clementon Democrat Committee is submitting three names for consideration by the remaining members of the Clementon Borough Council to fill the unexpired term. This term is scheduled to expire on 12/31/2012. The Clementon Democrat Committee therefore tenders the names of the following individuals: Mark Armbruster, William Doherty, David Cornwell. Sincerely, Mark Armbruster, Clementon Democrat Committee Chairman.
Okay, having heard the letter, we have a motion to nominate an individual to fill council vacancy pursuant to NJSA 40A: Colon sixty dash fifty-nine A, and NJSA 40A: Colon sixty dash eleven.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mark Armbruster to the vacant council position.
Roll call.
Okay, but before, I want to nominate Cornwell. None?
Well, if the nomination is made in second, you have to vote on that.
Okay.
Well, hold on a second. You were recently appointed to the Housing Authority.
Yes.
Do you understand that if you're elected to this body, you will have to resign that position?
I have been sworn in or even taken a seat there yet.
You have not been sworn in?
No.
Okay. I think if someone else wants to make a nomination, there can be a second nomination. If that's second, and then you'll just vote on the nomination. So, if you want to make a motion to nominate somebody, you can do that, and have it seconded, and then we'll vote on each one. I nominate Cornwell.
Is there a second? Not having a second.
There's no second, the motion fails.
Motion fails, we'll vote on the original nomination. Excuse me, Mark Armbruster.
Was there a motion in second on the Armbruster nomination?
Yes.
All right, then you can vote for him.
Roll call.
Councilman Adalina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Claus?
Yes.
Councilman Weaver?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Congratulations. Okay. Next we go to swearing-in of a member of the council.
It doesn't matter, you are, whoever wants to do it. Yeah, too many times. I would much prefer Carol to stay.
All right, let's see if you've learned anything.
No, you probably want to do it.
Left hand on the Bible, I'd raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Mark Armbruster.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Alice Worth Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
Bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties and responsibilities.
All the duties and responsibilities.
As a councilman.
As a councilman.
With the borough Clementon.
Borough Clementon.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Could we now have a nomination of an individual to fill the vacant council president's seat?
Other could nominate Tommy Weaver?
Looking for a second? Second.
Who was the nomination for?
Tommy Weaver.
Tom Weaver.
You heard Tom, he thought it was you.
No, no.
Are there any other nominations for council president? Let's take a roll call for Tommy Weaver, council president.
Councilman Armbruster.
Yes.
Councilman Adalina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Claus?
Yes.
Councilman Weaver?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
That was kind of neat, that was my first vote in nine years, I got to vote on second, I bet.
Moving up to, second to seven, approval of the bill list. First we go to eight approval minutes.
Probably want to do individually, because you don't know who was at what meeting, so somebody's got to make the motion at that meeting.
Do we have the motion for the approval of November 22, 2011 council meeting? Looking for approval of that dismissed.
I'm going to condition it as a second.
He was not here that day. That was an absentee.
I was here, I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilman Armbruster?
Yes.
Councilman Adalina?
I wasn't here, abstained.
Councilwoman Claus?
Something tells me I wasn't here either.
What are the minutes on the slate? Let's see, you were here.
You were.
You were here. Yes, you were here. Yes, you were here. Um, so, okay, I have to say, yes, maybe a minute.
Um, go ahead.
Um, Councilman Weaver? Councilman Williams?
Stay.
And Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have approval minutes from December 6, 2011 caucus meeting.
Motion approved, December 6, 2011 caucus meeting.
Second? Roll call.
Councilman Armbruster?
Yes.
Councilman Adalina?
What's this for, Mayor?
The minutes, you're abstaining again.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilwoman Claus?
Yes.
Councilman Weaver?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Stay.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have a motion for approval of December 20, 2011 council meeting.
Motion approved, December 20, 2011 council meeting.
Second? Roll call.
Councilman Armbruster?
Yes.
Councilman Adalina?
I'm staying.
Councilwoman Claus?
Yes.
Councilman Weaver?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Stay.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. On the Section 9 ordinances and resolutions, the first ordinance, 2012.08, is to exceed the municipal budget appropriation amendment sent to establish a cap bank pursuant to NJSA 40A: Colon four dash forty-five, period fourteen. Motion to introduce. Second? Roll call.
Councilman Armbruster?
Yes.
Councilman Adalina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Claus?
Yes.
Councilman Weaver?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
B, Resolution R-12-65, introducing the 212 municipal budget. Motion to introduce the 212 municipal budget.
Second?
Roll call.
Councilman Armbruster?
I'll stay on that, I don't have enough information to make a vote on that at this time.
Councilman Adalina?
Question, is this what we went over on the budget meeting?
Yes. All the numbers that were put together, the cuts that were made, that is compiled together, and that's the budget document that I gave you.
Nothing changed from there?
No, nothing changed from that, from those numbers and figures that I put in.
Yes.
Okay, um, Councilwoman Claus?
Yes.
Councilman Weaver?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Abstained.
Motion carries. Can you pull those two?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. With some of the remaining resolutions, we're going to group them together and vote on them at once. There's been requests to pull out the resolution authorizing mayor council to execute shared service.
Why don't you just do 12-68 now, read the name, and then you can group those?
Okay, Resolution R-12-68, appointing certain officers of the Clementon Fire Department for a term expiring on December 31, 2013. I want to bring that down. Randy Fryling has, I'd like to appoint Randy Fryling as the Fire Services Coordinator. We have a motion to make that appointment?
Just read them out.
Yes, read them out.
Okay. Robbie Fryling as Deputy Chief Fire Services Coordinator, and Troy Bishop as Captain.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint these two gentlemen.
Yeah, it's a motion to, to, per, per Resolution 12-68.
Correct.
Second?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Councilman Armbruster?
Yes.
Councilman Adalina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Claus?
Yes.
Councilman Weaver?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now we want to group together, oh, I'm sorry, Resolution R-12-66 through Resolution R-12-71.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on R-12-69. This agreement with Senhan Transit for the senior citizens.
Yes.
How many senior citizens use that facility, do we know?
It's a, it's a busing program.
Yeah.
That actually is run by the county, and we use CDVG grant money, grant funding. Every year we put $15,000 of our grant funds to the senior transportation. I know that it's a route that's run, and also a lot of people at Rooster Towers use it.
We use them, I was, I was thinking that they were not being used by the student.
I, in the past, I often get figures, but in the past, I know that Shilla Rooster from the town has, we've added stops to it, so I think, I believe that they-
Because I've been trying to get information on that, and I've been told that they don't, they don't even have stops for me to, to look at.
Across the street where the-
The Senhan Transportation.
Janey, who, did somebody submit this contract to you?
Yeah, I have a copy that I, you know, I have a copy of that, everybody.
Who submitted it to you?
Um, it's Senhan, it's guts, and through the Senhan Project, and that's what we've been using since I've been here since 2005, for the senior transportation. And I know that we've gone through the procedure in the past with the Housing Authority to add additional stops to the existing route.
I know it does stop currently at supermarkets, those types of things, for, primarily used by seniors that are used by other seniors around town, where we'll pick them up at their home and take them to shopping facilities, doctors, those types of things, and-
There's a list, actually, of-
Yeah, it has a route that it comply picks up.
Shopping transportation on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and to have the senior citizens-
For the-
For the residents that use it, yes.
For the residents.
Correct.
They don't pay anything.
Honestly, I don't believe so, but-
They don't pay anything, these services are provided in motion municipalities, it's a need to senior citizens so they can get around to, you know-
Right, I understand that, but at the senior center, at the meetings that we have at the senior center, there was discussion about using Senhan, and, and we were of the opinion that they could not use it.
Who could not use it?
That they didn't have, that they didn't know the schedule, we couldn't get a schedule. That they were under the impression, I was told that there was an extra charge for people to use it. It might have been a dollar or two.
Could we possibly, do they have a contract open on it, or could we get these questions answered before we vote on it?
We can get them answered, I believe that-
They're all very legitimate questions, and-
Right.
The program, my understanding, has been a very good program to the residents of Clementon over the years, and I do know it's used, I've seen plenty of our residents on the bus, but I know some towns don't do it, such as Berlin Township has purchased their own senior bus that they use, and do their own bus and that type of thing. There are other options, the good thing about this program is it's paid for out of community development block grant money, which you receive through HUD, and by doing that, it allows us, it gives that money not as a non-taxpayer expense. The CDVG money must be used on specific types of things, and one of the requirements typically is senior-type projects, that type of thing, and this is one of the things that is eligible for that money that we used for.
Why don't you just make a motion to table it tonight, and just get the questions answered, and do it at the moment?
Now, if we do table that, that's not going to mess up any transportation procedures between now and next council meeting.
No, I believe it's already being provided, but this is retroactive back to January 1st.
It's not going to, it's not going to add up in the next couple of weeks.
No, 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 they're just waiting for it. I did include this, just so that everyone's aware, on one of the other resolutions that's due, that's due for CDVG, for the project description forms. So, that, I mean, you don't want to change this, correct?
No, I would like to see what, what it is, the contract.
Okay, I didn't even have the, we can look at this while, we all have to vote on it tonight, we can look at it while-
You can break it down and conduct other business at the same time, we should just table it, so we should-
Janey, I think a specific question that needs to be asked there, how many of our residents use them, and what services are provided for the money that they spend?
Yeah.
And if we can add more stock.
If we align the 15,000 that's in the budget.
Hundred percent.
It has to be used, right, by grant.
It's grant funds, it's grant.
So they just prove it anyway, right? I mean, of course we get a grant, we got to spend it on the-
It could be spent on other things, but it has to be spent on senior uses.
Senior transportation.
Yeah, well, no, it could be spent on, in the past, the boroughs used it years ago for curb cutouts around town, for handicaps. It can even be used in District 3 of the town on almost any project, but only District 3 because under the, they're still basing it off the 2,000 census numbers, that it could be used there, even on playground equipment such as that. With the 2,010 census, when those numbers come out, if our demographics have changed, we may be able to use in other parts of town, but right now, if we use in District 1 or 2 on the CDVG map, it would have to be used for a senior project. But in District 3, it could be used for pretty much any project.
So what you're saying is-
It wouldn't hurt to table it, at least get our questions answered, and we make an informed decision.
The only reason I ask, it goes down my street every morning, one lady gets it, and I bring it back, and I don't know what she goes to play bingo, but if it's only one or two people using it, we could use that money for something else.
Well, that's why we want to table Tom to get some answers to, maybe with the new senior center, where he might be able to get some more stops there, and we'll find out if other people are using it.
And you're saying they charge them, they charge?
Well, see, that's what I wanted to find, yeah, but I don't know.
Yeah, we could check on that, too. Janey, would you be able to find out about that, just a second?
Yeah, I have a copy of the contract, we're just going to see how many people use it, I guess, and-
And if they can add stop.
And how they use it.
We can, without, without stopping. We can, we have, we had the stops in the past, so that can be done.
Janay, and how they use it. How do they know to use it? Did individuals have to make phone calls? Do they- Where we-
I'll make a motion to table resolution-